7:01, starting with pledge to the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the very honor for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, first thing up on the agenda is a biorial statement. Okay, so. One of the things that I've noticed is that the meetings have started to get a little bit chaotic. And there's a little bit too much back and forth, a little bit too much out of control. So I just want to reiterate the way that the rules work. So in Texas, this is a council meeting. It's a council meeting. The law is clear. The public has no right to speak at a council meeting. Zero point zero. There is no right for the public to speak at all at a council meeting. Now, in 2007, I don't think, other than Darryl, any of you were here in 2007. But in 2007, the mayor got a, asked the attorney to write up an opinion letter. And it was clear. And it said, no one can speak at a council meeting. Okay? There is no right to speak. And he put it on that desk. And that was Paul Ballers. Paul was the mayor. Paul was the presiding officer. Paul decided there would be no speaking at a council meeting. He decided that. You walked in that door, there was no three minutes, there was no public comments, there was nothing. You walked in that door and you couldn't say another word. You sat there and didn't say a word. That was perfectly acceptable because he did it. He was the presiding officer. In Texas law, that's what you can do. There is no right to speak at a meeting. And that's what he invoked. That was his choice. He was the presiding officer. Now, the way the law works is if there's a public hearing, then you can speak. That's why the state says certain times you have to have a public hearing. Because you have to let the citizen speak for certain things like the tax code. You have to do it. Other than that, a city can say there will be absolutely no speaking at all. It's up to the presiding officer to decide that. Now, in here, it's gotten out of control. Okay? So what we're going to do is we're going to go back to the standard operating way that every city operates. Which is, we have public comments and you'll have your three minutes. You can talk about anything you want. You'll come up, you'll go to the podium, you'll have your three minutes, or three and a half, whatever. You'll have your time. You can say any topic you want, on anything you want. That's the public comments. After that, you'll sit down and unless there's a public hearing, there's not going to be any more running commentary from the audience. There's not going to be any Q and A. The audience, you're going to observe the meeting and we've got work to do. We can't have a four-hour council meeting because people are shouting out and there's a lot of stuff going back and forth and we're getting distracted. We've got work to do. We only meet once a month. So we're going to get that back to business. Okay? So that's where we're going to do it. We're going to follow the same, same protocols that works in every city does. So, public comments, if there's a hearing, you can talk for as long as you want. Other than that, you'll sit there and you'll observe. Okay? Now, behind the table, here, I'm guilty of engaging the audience too much. I'm a professor. I'm used to looking out over the audience, that's my students. And I'm used to engaging them. That's what I do for a living. That's, that's my fault. I'm not supposed to do that. Okay? You guys are the council. This is a council meeting. My job is to moderate your discussions. Okay? But what I want you to do is to make sure that you're discussing things with each other. So the objective is I should be addressing you, you should be addressing Garrett, we should be addressing each other. This is a council meeting. That's what I want to see. I'll keep my head on a swivel as best I can. But if you've got something to say, say it. Let me know, do something. Okay? But that's the idea. But we want to engage each other. We're spending, the time here is a council meeting. We get one shot at it a month. Once a month. And we need to get business done. We're spending a lot of time and we're not accomplishing as many things as we can. Okay? So, that's what I'm going to do. I'm going to do the best I can to, to hold up my end because I'm the one guilty of it, probably more than anybody else, of getting off time. Okay? So, first thing up there, visitor's citizens' forum. Second up. Anytime any person with business for the council not scheduled on the agenda may speak to the council, no formal action may be taken on these items at the meeting. Anyone sign up? Nobody signed up? Okay. Next up, we have a public hearing. So this is a public hearing for defense ordinance. This is an opportunity. What we like to do, Clint and I talked about this several years ago, was that whenever we're going to pass an ordinance that has a penalty, which could affect you because there's a penalty, we want to make sure that you have the ability to say what you think. Tell us whether you like it, you don't like it, what you want to change. Jeff has been great about doing this very, very well done, very professionally doing this. And, and I think that's, that's commendable. So, the public hearing is open. Does anyone have any comments about the defense ordinance? I hope everybody got a chance to read it. Any comments? Nope? Okay.
Motion to close the public hearing on fences?
I have a motion to close the public hearing on fences. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Second? All those in favor? Okay. Next up. So the second thing we have is by, by, again, by custom, what we do is if someone in the town is asking for a variance, what we allow is we allow anyone to give comments about the variance. So it's your chance to say, I like it, I don't like it, whatever, whatever you want to do. We want to allow the public to be able to say something about a variance. Okay? So, the next thing on there is a, Mike Ballman is here. He's asking for a variance on 418 Hillside, which we'll get to. If anyone, you can, you can give comments right now. So, does anyone have anything to say about Mike's proposed variance? Other than Mike. You'll get your choice later. Okay? Nope? All right?
Motion to close the public hearing.
I have a motion to close the public hearing. Second by Ed. All those in favor? Okay, thank you. All right. Next thing on the agenda is the consent agenda. We have a, we have the auditor letter, we have a replant of 206 Hyridge. Everybody knows 206 Hyridge, we renumbered some of the addresses here. They were changed many, many years ago for no reason. Some bizarre reason. So, 206 Hyridge is the house that was remodeled right behind this building, right over here in when they redid the stucco. One used to have the horrible green stucco. It's now that it's done. So, the replant, it's actually a double lot. It's two lots that were there. He split the lot back to the original configuration, which is the empty lot and then the one with the house it's on. The lot is full size. It's 80 by 120. It's a standard, normal lot. It meets the requirements. And that's the variance. That's why it's on consent. Let me have the house.
Okay? I just got one of the amendments. There's a minor error on the, I think when we were talking about the coercion somewhere. I think that's my mistake. I think Gary didn't vote. I think, I think he meant to. But I wasn't looking at the video because I'm taking my own outfit. I just know she didn't vote on that one. But I think you reported him to the S. So I think we might need to just add that back in and re-vote that thing.
No child.
A silent vote is an affirmation.
Silent vote is an affirmation.
And no vote is an affirmation. You have to affirmatively vote. And I apologize. Usually if I don't see something, I try to specifically ask for your vote.
Yeah, that's what it was. It was definitely a silent vote. No doubt.
Okay. I apologize. I missed that.
Okay.
And no vote is an affirmation.
All right. Do you have a motion to approve the consent agenda? Somebody?
I have a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Okay. Motion, do I have a second?
I have a second.
Okay. Motion second, all those in favor? Thank you. All right. Next up, on the regular agenda. All right. Councilmember related party disclosures. Linda has this here. I was wondering if we'll distribute that. So, the auditor had a scheduling conflict, so the audit, the field. The analytical part of the audit is underway. We've already had discussions with the auditor. I've already met with them. The field work is going to be done the week of Thanksgiving is when the field work will be here. We are on track because of the, the December council meeting is the 14th. It's late as it can be. So we are on track for the December council meeting to be the, releasing the audit report. In order to keep the audit on schedule, this is a, instead of Wayne mailing this out, the auditor and then us turning around and mailing it back, this is three questions just saying, did we have any transactions with the city council? And the answer is no. We didn't do any transactions. We didn't hire any city council members. So, what I'd like to do is have everybody sign this and get this to Linda by the end of the meeting. So we can get this to the auditor and we can keep the audit on track. We don't want to, we don't want to delay the audit. We won't delay the audit. It'll just end up being a, it'll just keep stressing until you, until you do it. So. Again, all this is, is a related party. So for instance, in Little Elm, the mayor pro temp is Neil Mullays. Neil runs a consultant company. That's what he does. Little Elm hired him to do consulting work for Little Elm. So they've paid him.
I think we've all seen him except for Liz. So, do you have a question?
So anyway, if you can get, get those to Linda, that would be great. All right. Next up, we have a variance request for garage size and garage door setback to 418 Hillside. Mike, if you're still, this is Mike Ballman. He is building at 418 Hillside. He's trying to put a house on the smallest lot in Lakewood Village, which is one-sixth of an acre. Not one-quarter, but one-sixth. Which is a little bit of a challenge. As you can see, it's the traditional rectangle knot. So, I applaud Mike for keeping out of setbacks, which is great. I applaud Mike for putting a side entry garage in over there. Some of the houses don't have side entry. Especially being a very small lot. I applaud you for side entering that, that garage. So I appreciate you trying to make it work.
Exactly. And that's the only way a modest low worker either go to a front load garage, which would probably ease the area to the side of the house a little bit. But the garage, it can't meet the requirements with this house and the size of the lot in order to not encroach in the setbacks. So I'm making sure the side yard variance is supposed to be 28 feet and 23 for. I think it'll work very easily. The way it's laid out, this right here, I'm probably going to slide the driveway over a little closer to the property line to keep from, maybe a little bit easier for entrance in the garage. That's my request at this point in time.
Is this a?
Where's the regular?
Oh, that is a lay spot.
So is this going to be a variance too for flat work up on the property line?
Uh, I, you know, we've been trying to stay off the line, right? Like a foot off the line as best you can.
I can't remember. Is the neighbor's driveway on the side? But it doesn't come always?
No, the neighbor's, no.
That's why it isn't.
Mike has the other, Mike is next to it. Now, he'll have.
That's right. Okay, I know which one. Okay. That's, my concern is driveway's touchy. But that's right. It's that driveway's on the side.
I love you.
Yeah, I mean, the problem we run into on some of these triangular lots is, you know, when you push it back, you're bumping into the sides. And then you've got front setbacks. So you've got to be in the Goldilocks zone where you're past the front. But you're, you can't keep going backwards because you start hitting the sides. So it's a tricky geometry.
This, this little shape back here, it'll help, you know, make a little brand.
So, from the, from the city's point of view, I'm not a voting member of a variance. From the city's point of view, my view is this is an irregular shaped lot. I think he meets the intent of putting a side entry in. It'd be much easier for him to put in a front entry garage. But, but he's trying to meet the intent of the code. And he's doing the best he can on the smallest lot, like the variance. So.
So is that the only, the only variance? I mean, all, all the other setbacks would match.
Yes. You know, we have pretty big garages here. 25 by 22 is a nice, healthy sized garage.
This garage may be like 20 more than 22.
Yeah, that's what I said. I think you're meeting the intent. Yeah, exactly.
Maybe a little bit bigger.
Normal sized garage, not standard house.
Well, what's interesting for us too is, you know, we have the same sized garage for Shores as we do for your lot. So a 4-eater lot has got the same garage requirement as your one-sixth of an acre lot. You know, we didn't, we didn't split them off, so. Have you talked to Garrett?
I have talked all the way through. No problem with it.
I have one favor. That is heavily against the front facing garage. This is kind of a compromise, right?
Yes.
Okay. Any more questions? Somebody more?
Motion to approve variances for 418 Hillside.
Motion, do I have a second?
Second.
Second? All those in favor?
Thank you for coming.
Thank you.
Thanks, Mike. When do you, when do you think you're gonna, you started pushing dirt already, right?
Right. Probably as soon as I get the permit, I'm going to start moving forward, so.
Mike, when are you, when are you going to do the one behind?
I'm actually going to probably start moving forward on the retaining wall. It's probably going to start until next year. But it'll definitely be next year. But I'm going to probably move forward on the retaining wall, get to a, I guess there's a little concern about the.
We'll get it a little cleaned up.
Right. I just found cleaning up, the kind of spending money and labor to clean it up, I might as well go with retaining wall and get it done in a little bit.
Turning the vote to Trump and stuffy.
Right.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mike. Thank you.
Can I clarify your motion? You're doing garage size, garage door setback, and the flat work going to the property line?
No, I don't want the property, I don't want to go into the property. Keep it off the property line. Keep it off.
How much?
What do you want, Mike?
Six inches would be ideal.
How about a foot?
Let's do a foot.
Let's round it off to the nearest foot.
Yeah, normally I do three, but that one's really tight.
That one's a two.
Since the other house is already there, the garage on the other side, then.
Right.
So flat work, one foot off the property?
Thank you, Mike. Okay. All right. Next up, number three. Consideration, so consideration of defense ordinance. So, after our talks the last two months, I've gone in and made two changes. I've, Clint sent me some written changes. The one change just deals with what's an acceptable material, making sure you can't use pallets or, it has to be out of new materials. So that was the one, one change that Clint wanted. And then if you scroll down a little bit further.
No metal mentioned.
Huh?
There was no metal mentioned as an acceptable, acceptable material.
Well, I think it says.
Chain link?
No, it says metal. I think it says metal.
We're going to construct from the channel, it'll be vinyl wood, excluding landscape dentures forever and always, masonry or chain link.
It's kind of lost ornamental iron.
Or lost metal? Okay. So let's, after chain link there, number one, let's just put chain link and then come with metal. Okay? So permitted, so number one there, permitted destruction, masonry, yeah, I, I'm sorry, but I believe it. You had that in here and I, I believe it. Not, not the number one. Masonary, chain, or chain link, or metal. Is that close enough?
That's the same, the same ornamental iron.
Is that metal?
Yeah.
Okay. So ornamental.
So is sheet metal.
Ornamental, all right. Okay. So that's the change there. And then down lower, when you get to the special provisions for waterfront, the section that dealt with fencing is struck. And then if you scroll down a little bit further, that's the part that permitted it. This says no solid fence, board on were permitted. Just scratch it in the front, because that means it's not there. Okay? I think that was the consensus from the council in our last meeting. So I think we, I think we've debated this long enough. So, I'd like a motion to approve as many.
I'll motion to approve the fence ordinance with the amendment in section 3.11 to add ornamental iron fire.
Okay. I have a motion. Do I have a second? The second, all those in favor? Opposed? All right. Next up, we have the. Next up is, I'm sorry. Discussion of impact free report and this is Clint.
So I don't have a discussion on this. Darryl addressed the council last month after, with the meeting from CICA. Their recommendation was to look forward to the changes, the engineering review with them. So the number here is just kind of a high level summary of changes between what we adopted in 2016 and what's proposed for 2017. So related, I have any questions you guys have? Maybe a couple notes here moving forward. So the next step, Linda already has a public hearing scheduled for December. Confirmation that was already published in paper. Kimberly Moore will be here, so we'll look at a public hearing. They'll address comments for the council and, or citizens. And then we'll consider adoption of the ordinance in December.
Okay. Any questions?
Yeah, so I've got a couple of questions. So the first line that says the council meeting is held on July 13th. And we unanimously approve updating the impact fee ordinance. So if you go back and you look at the notes of that, we were, we were asked to open up the impact fee ordinance to include the possible new, there was a reason given for this. When you, when you consider that, that makes no sense. If you're going to have an additional well, then you might want to add anything to that. But then, when you go through with what actually happened, this is a, to me, it looks a complete rewrite from what we have. And I think it's a little concerning because there's, there's a whole number of things to change. You got them on here, but the effect is the question, right? So, in some of the mayor's letters, we've been told the impact fees are going to pay for the government of concrete roads. The impact fee is going to pay for this. And it's very difficult to understand that, but.
Just to be clear, this was never about roads. This is about water and sewer.
Right. But the money, the funds was addressed that it was going to pay.
No.
The money can't. If you leave where your money from the impact fees for sewer, that's what you use for sewer, from water.
That's, that's why we challenged it originally. We originally said the impact fee had to be the impact of the town. And yet, we've been told that these money is going to be helping us out in other ways. That was the original objection to this whole thing. So now, the, the one thing I asked for was a side-by-side comparison. Show me what it was, show me what it is. Now, I understand you have the changes on here, but then that effect isn't shown. So the dollar values. So we went from, what, $16,000 per lot to, I don't know, some of that was, right?
It reduced, yeah.
Right. So the question is, what's the effect on the town? What's, what's the overall dollar? So the interesting thing with my, you know, when I ask that, I can't get the answer on it. Secondly, I went to the engineer. He won't provide the information. So before we pass anything, the town people should realize, hey, if we're going to go from X number of millions of dollars impact fees down to something substantially less, we probably should understand two things. One, what is that dollar amount before we do anything? But two, why are we changing that? And I think you've got some questions like, there's a, there's substantial changes here. We were originally asked to vote on this to add well in. And now we've completely redone it, right? If you, if you look at the old one compared to the new one, it's a complete rewrite. So the question is, why all of a sudden are we rewriting our impact fees? I haven't been able to get that answered.
You want me to tell you?
Yeah, it'd be nice, yes.
Okay. When you have, when you do impact fees, there's two ways you can do it. There's two ways. So one way to do it is that, what most cities do, is there is water and sewer lines that are mains, the lift stations, that are on the property. That's on Garrett's property. And then over here is the wastewater plant. There's a well, here's the wastewater. So here, this is off-site. This is onsite. That's on Garrett's property. Now, when Garrett is done with his development, Gary will take those lift stations, those water mains, the fire hydrants, all of that stuff, and Gary will give them to the city. We have to maintain the water line and sewer lines. That's why they have to build it to our specs. Our engineer does that. Now, what, one way to do it is what most cities do. Most cities say, since you're going to end up giving that to us, we're going to end up owning the water and the lift station and the sewer manes and everything, we will pay, we'll put this in the impact fee calculations. Which means the city will pay half of that and the developer will pay half. Over here on the offsites, because you have to expand the well or the sewer plant or something on the offsites, by law, the most you can charge them is 50%. That's by law. So there's, there's the off, there's the onsite and the offsite. When we did the first set of impact fees, that's what the engineers did. Was, one of the things they did was they said, we're going to assume, and we're going to talk to the CICA, you're going to do the traditional way of doing it. You're going to do this and this. Now, subsequently, Clint, Clint and I talked to attorneys. And we said, look, do we have to do it this way or can we do it differently? Because I know most cities do this and this, but do we have to? And the attorney said, no, you don't have to. And there's a lot of legal things. They said, alternatively, what you could do is you could say, we're not participating at all. The entire thing is on Garrett. We're not doing any of it. You pay 100% of that over there. Legally over here, this is the offsite, we're still legally committed to 50% here. We're not required to participate, even though we're going to get them at the end, we don't have to participate. So the change, this change was to go back and say, we're not going to participate at all. So Landplan, you have to pay 100% of the cost of your water mains, 100% of your sewer, lift stations, fire hydrants, 100% of it. And we're just going to sit over here. We're not going to participate at all. And you will pay us half of whatever we need to expand water plant and sewer. So that was the big change.
So I, I understand the change. My question was, why the change? We, we spent, we spent years developing those impact fees. You were very passionate that they had to be a certain way. And then all of a sudden, you know, somebody made the decision not to work. So that, that's what I understand. So, we were told to update the impact fees to include a well, which opened it up.
I don't, I don't know where you're getting that from.
It's from, we discussed it in the council. We can build that.
Do you have a second, Will? Anyway, it doesn't matter.
Doesn't, doesn't matter. It's what we were told.
But the idea is this.
The question is, why did you decide to change it? That's why I'm asking, saying, did you have a meeting with Landplan? Did something happen? What, what drove the call?
We've been, just like you said, we met with, we met with the engineer, we met with the attorney. We figured options. And it turned out that there's a second option that actually reduces the amount of burden on the taxpayers in Lakewood Village. So, decided to go that route.
Now, the flip side of that, the reason why cities.
But that's not what was communicated to us. If you were coming, here's Clint, here's the thing. You could come to us and say, hey, we got a way to save the town money. We're going to go open up the impact fees, we want to do this. And they'll look at it and say, it makes sense. If it doesn't make sense, we'll go now.
This is what you're doing now. This is, you've got to get them in order.
No, here's the problem. The, the problem is the money was spent. You spent the money with the engineer over budget. We didn't have the money. You spent the money with the lawyer over budget. We didn't have the money. So what I'm really questioning is who gave you the authority to spend the money over budget? You were never authorized to do that.
We were over the budget.
You were. You were.
Well, we were not. The whole discussion we had was, we had money left over from the task, we knew we spent a budget by. We had money left over from the task, and so, we talked about that. We, we didn't finish the task.
Right, we didn't finish the task, there's money left over on the task, so we carried that over onto the next budget, so. That, here, there's, there's no consideration on this, this is just teeing it up, so.
But, well, that was the change, that was what the change. We're not gonna agree with that, so I think, so I think what I would like to hear is, you can explain, the decision-making to go ahead and do that is the part I wanna know. What, what drove you to go over budget and let go over budget on that, on the engineering? It's not even much, but I mean, it's, it's our money here, okay? My question is, what drove that discussion? There's no way, you just said, hey, we should go talk to the lawyer. Something drove that, and I would like to know as a council member, what that was.
Dan, I'm constantly evaluating our ordinances and developer agreements, and talking with developers, and talking with other cities, I'm constantly doing that. So if we're talking with other cities, we're trying to figure out what other cities do. So Clint and I got together, and then we started talking with the attorney.
Yeah, this is just, our words are gonna get twisted around, but move on, there's no, no discussion here, I mean, all is discussion.
Now, you're gonna have a chance, I mean, we're gonna come back next month with the ordinance, and the engineer will be here. So we'll be able to, you know, continue on.
Both documents are available, they're actually written in very safe format, they're very easy to read side-by-side.
Just, just to be real clear, it's not the question of documents, the question is why?
I know, we keep answering the question the same way, you keep asking the same question, so.
Okay, so let's, I think that's fair. All right, so let's move on then, the next item on the agenda is a, uh, okay, it's a consideration of authorizing expenditures for road repairs, okay? So, we've talked about this, um, the objective is to repair Melody and, I'm sorry, repair Cary and Hyridge, money set aside, no more stalling, let's just get this done. Okay, we have a company, we got a track record, they did the job well the last time, we gotta get it done right now. We cannot keep delaying this installing, because it's gonna end up getting into cold weather. Then when it gets into spring, no one's gonna do the job. Because when Houston dries out, the great and permeable surface that is Houston is gonna have everybody down there paving. So this is it, we need to get it done right now. So, what I want is, I want to get these roads repaired now. From down to five or two streets, let's get it done. So, I think Walts is the way to go, Walts we have track record with, there's no reason to switch with somebody else. We don't know what they're gonna do, they could then decide in three months' time, you know, you got somebody that's gonna pay us for it. Or we got a different schedule problem, there, there's no accountability. With Walts, same guy did it last time, they're back again, they're willing to do the repairs on a couple of things that didn't work out. They're ready, they have a track record, I know they're gonna do the job, they're not gonna bail on us. So, let's get it done. So, I wanna move on, I want to authorize twenty-five thousand, plus or minus, or not minus, twenty-five thousand plus ten percent contingency, because once they're here, once they're already here, they've mobilized, everything's here, then all they're worried about is their variable costs, the guys who are already here.
It's not the tax science on the square footage.
And, and that's when it's easy for us to then make a deal, and, and maybe get some, potentially get more stuff done, because they're already here. Usually when they come, they try and do that anyway, they always try and do more than what the contract is, so, just give us some flex.
So how much money do we have in the budget?
We have thirty-two thousand in the account?
Have we moved the thirteen thousand back to the MDD that was not supposed to be in the building?
Okay, so.
Now, hold on, if you guys don't wanna, you need to answer the question, you, you told me before you did, have you moved the thirteen thousand back to the MDD where it belongs? It's sales set twenty, it should not be in our.
Dan, that's your opinion, we're not gonna go.
Those were your words, you said you moved it back.
Yeah, we're not gonna go, okay? This, this is not a good debate account. This is about, question, are we ready to, ready to get this done, we don't have the money, guys?
I'm motion to authorize a contract, do twenty-five thousand dollars plus minus, or ten percent contingency.
Okay, I have a motion to move ahead with the contract.
Yeah, I do.
Shouldn't we discuss, should we here, the, I thought the task from the last meeting was that.
About the bags, asshole?
Well.
I don't think that's an option.
Yeah, no, and I think, actually, that was a good product, it, it might come in handy for patching stuff later on. Uh, Liz did do a little research, and she came up with a company that would do anything from a overlay of a tack coat and an overlay, uh, at forty-three percent higher than what Walts paid you. Of course, Walts not doing an overlay on anything, it's total patch. That encapsulated it pretty fast, but, anything you wanna add to that, Liz?
No, um, I mean, I discussed my reservations with Walts, because as of yesterday, yesterday was the only day that he actually came out and we looked at what his company had done. And it was a little bit concerning to me, as a business, when you do work, you should go out, either you or your foreman to look at the work was done properly. So I wanna make sure that after he gets his second project done for us, that he's gonna do that. That he's going to come back and look at it, and not look at it after twelve months. He needs to come back and look to make sure that it's done correctly.
Well, he did a couple times for that, and I think we both agree.
Okay. All right. I have a motion for the clip.
Yes, motion's still good.
Yeah.
The motion is still on the table, we're waiting on a second.
Do I have a second?
I'll second it.
Okay, motion to a second, all those in favor? Opposed? Right, one. Next up, we have, um, CapEx projects. Okay, so, what this is, uh, in the budget, we approved a, um, we approved sixty-five thousand dollars in CapEx in the budget. And what I've done is, I've gone back now, and I'm, I'm trying to repurpose, uh, some of the projects now. I've talked to, uh, Sam, and we, we have, we've kind of gone back and re-examined the lift stations, some of the other options we have. Uh, the fire hydrant, we, we budgeted ten for, uh, it looks like it's now gonna be eight. We have less, uh, six, we have more six-inch line than when we thought we had, so we don't need to extend the six-inch line. So that's gonna come in at eight. On the stone lift station, we've been troubleshooting it, I know Clint spent some time with Sam with the capacitors.